Two minutes after two o'clock, Bonner County on a beautiful Thursday evening for the Bonner County Fairgrounds Grant Award Discussion. Right? Okay, just gonna roll this wagon.
Me?
Well, so may I start?
You may.
Mr. Chi-Mei.
You may.
More of that formality, I find it so civil. So yesterday, Mr. Chairman, I was, as a little bit of a story, I was down in Boise and I was at the tax and revenue meeting and I was just impressed with the format. I love the formality of the legislature. I dislike it, so anyways, Mr. Chairman. I've had a meeting-
Okay, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as you are aware, there's been some chaos with our fairgrounds and in regards to the campground. And I asked to schedule a meeting with Mr. Jensen from Sewell, who's gonna speak, and Teddy. And I've spoken with Bill about some fair stuff. I have not brought it to the board's attention so that we would be in compliance with open meeting law.
That's fair.
So, in our meeting, there are some steps that I believe the Board of Commissioners should do based upon the information that Mr. Sewell's, or Mr. Jensen's gonna talk about, so that we can get this grant working and get it going.
Okay.
So, go over it. You didn't just take Mike and sit right there?
I might be a little-
Grab and twist and pull at the same time.
So-
Did you say your name for the recording, please?
My name is Jeff Jensen. I work for James A. Sewell and Associates in Sandpoint, Idaho. I was contacted by Darcy, what's her last name? Smith, in 2019 as part of a fairgrounds campground grant application with the Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation. And we have been working with, we were working with her prior to October of 2022. The Phase Two grant was approved in July of 2022. It involves the expansion of a campground in the southwest corner of the fairgrounds property. I think it's thirty-four spots. As part of the, as part of that process, a conditional use permit is required from the City of Sandpoint and plans and specifications need to be provided to the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality for a water service main extension from City of Sandpoint providing water. I've had some discussions with the City of Sandpoint regarding the placement of that campground on fairgrounds property or Bonner County property and what is the best plan of action for that. Commissioner Omen has had those same conversations. So to move forward with the conditional use permit and the submission of the plans to DEQ, a resolution needs to be made regarding where, where the campground sits with regards to the property that the fairground sits on and then Lot One of the Bonner Readiness Center Plan. Is that a fair explanation, Commissioner Omen?
Yes. So, having spoken with the city, what we need to do in order to move forward with this grant is we need to replat where the campground is gonna sit, which means we're gonna need to hire an engineer. Mr. Jensen made the suggestion to work with a company out of Corlaine because they had previously done so. It is also an opportunity at the same time to clean up some existing challenges that we have with that property and the plating, so we could do two things all at once with one bill, which I think would be wise. We have to replat where the campground as drawn sits in order for the city to allow us to move forward with the CDP. So, I believe the motion, and this is why I'm glad you're here, so I believe that the motion that we would need to make, Mr. Chairman, is to engage the services of an engineer to replat the property so that we can proceed and to engage Sewell and Associates to go forward. Is that about right?
I do, I think we'd be okay. I, I do have some questions or comments before we go for that. So is this then to replat to essentially expand the fairground property or how, what is the plat, what is the replat, what, how is that supposed to, what's the vision?
Just take a nick out of the sheriff's spot there a little bit.
Okay.
No, there's nothing-
No, I'm not pro or con, I'm just trying to-
Were we moving the line forward and moving the campground forward?
So there's-
Like up, like north?
Okay, so here, do you want a better?
Yeah.
So all of this needs to be incorporated into this piece of property. So this line will go away, this will all become one piece of property. Ultimately, the campground has to be associated with the fair because that is not an acceptable use according to the city. The only way that they're gonna give us permission to have the campground is if it's on the fairground, that plat that-
Do it, Jeff has a better map.
You want a bigger one?
Yeah.
So, so it just has to be on that plat, if that makes sense.
My question is, is Dylan gonna sit where?
Well, Mr. Chairman, what I suggested after speaking with Mr. Jensen is-
Kind of what I'm trying to get at here.
Can we use that picture so-
Which one do you want?
The old one and the new one, and I'll explain what we talked about in our meeting.
The former.
So the way that it was, is this, this is the old one.
Right.
So in the old one, here's the challenge for us that it provides. Right now, if it's in this vision, what it does is it creates-
Okay, your own.
It's on two pieces, but what it does is then the, because of the oddity of the fair board, it kind of creates some challenges when it's on the fair board property. And I've spoken and actually, I used to camp there, there's the pig barn. This, our fair is busy. They need the parking. So what I spoke with Mr. Jensen about is just moving it completely to the southwest a little further so that the fair will continue to have that and that way the fair still has that, that ground.
So, you guys, one concern that I have with this is that, you know, based on prior experience, and I think you and I talked about this a little bit, you know, there were previous plans for development in that neck of the woods and it, and it hit a snag with specifically Daryl because he hadn't been, I think with the ice rink is what I'm bringing up, and he had had an issue with not being notified of potential development there. So, I just wouldn't wanna go down that same road twice with him. Has this, have you guys spoken with Daryl about this at all or are you interested in doing that?
Not since we approved it the first time.
Okay, I understand, I'm anticipating that you might, you might have a struggle with him. I mean, you guys can do what you wanna do, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to help you guys.
Excellent.
Okay.
That's-
Okay, well, I mean-
This is a Board of County Commissioners decision.
Okay. So then, if that's your intent-
To follow the law, yes.
Okay, so that's, that's my question.
Can I speak?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Jensen.
So, really what it is, is it's adjusting the property as it was used, right? We're not really changing property boundaries or changing use, we're cleaning out property lines to conform with the existing uses, right? Like that piece of property that's attached to the Bonner Readiness Center Plan was, has always been kind of attached to the fairgrounds and used by the fairgrounds, but the property lines don't represent that.
And I, I think, like what I'm saying is I think Daryl would disagree with that really strong.
Oh.
Okay, no, I'm just, you know, I'm not trying to usurp your guys' authority, I'm just trying to make sure we don't, or at least you guys recognize what we're getting to.
Yeah.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I do.
I have two other questions with relation to the grant, is that, one, this, this grant was entered into by the DOCC and they signed, or not the fair board. The fair board and their employees, in my opinion, are not qualified to manage a grant, nor do they have adequate funding to expend first and seek reimbursement later. The, the fair does have a small match associated with this, which is about twenty-five thousand, which is fine, but I just wanna make sure that we are setting up somebody, a project manager here within the building that will manage that grant, knows, okay, I, I just need to make sure from the grant management perspective that we are.
And we also address that in the MOU that this board just approved-
Okay.
With the fair board. The fair board hasn't approved yet, but we hope that they will shortly. And I think there's a specific portion of that that says the county itself will be responsible for grant application management.
And working with them, because my concern was that, like, Chris Larson would take it upon himself to call or-
Right, and hopefully we're gonna clarify all that when, when everything gets-
Would it be good to see what the camp, what the fairground does, because if they don't adopt that MOU, then, then everything is a little bit uncertain?
No, I, I, I would disagree, and here's the reason why. It is county property, we have a timeline for this grant. This grant benefits the county. This is a Board of County Commissioners, that is where the authority lies. The grant was assigned to the county, we should move forward and we should build this because it's good for the county.
So my question to Bill would be that if the county is the one paying or and responsible for the grant, they're the ones that entered the contract, when the campground, when the campground goes into effect with revenue, who gets the revenue?
I think we get, I think we have the freedom to choose who gets-
Okay, I just wanna make sure what there's-
Yeah, I think, I mean, and there can be some kind of, I know it was always billed as something to make the, the fairground itself-
Self-supporting.
Self-supporting, but we have the ability to set their budget and then also-
Okay.
Make it be more if we want to, so I mean-
I just wanna make sure that that's clear to the fair board as well, like whatever decision is made that-
I actually called Chairman Russell, or Vice Chair Russell, and I called Chairman Gordon, and I've emailed them to try to tell them about this meeting and-
They don't respond.
Correct. I have emailed and I have called them and, well, you can see who's assembled here today to participate in this discussion and conversation. I think that speaks to some of the prior concerns.
Build, man.
Well, and I think for part of the discussion, this also has great opportunity for the county because if we're looking at impact fees for the future and for us to expand as a county park and recreation, by this being a county park, we can use that for other grant applications and that expands our ability for impact fees if it remains as a county park. So for the discussion, what I envision, or what I would like to bring to the board is to speak with you at some point, I have about fifty percent going to the fair and being dedicated and fifty percent going to parks and recreation for the county so that we can continue to expand access to our public lands and we can make improvements and hopefully we can become revenue neutral. And, I mean, that's what I, that's minus the cost of any administration fees because having been attending fair board meetings for six months, I'm not sure that they're prepared yet to be able to handle additional burdens with the staff that they have at this time. So, that's for, I don't know, what do you think, Mr. Chairman?
Makes sense.
So, going back to, I'm just trying to, you know, this, 'cause I'm not, I'm digesting this as, as we get here, one of the things I wanted to, like, so Mike's thought about, you know, doing this before they approve that MOU. So remember that the law says that the fair board has the authority to manage fair property. So, we're assuming that they're going to be able, that they would agree with us on that point, but if they don't, it will muddy the water on who can actually manage this thing.
I would beg to disagree, Mr. Wilson, because by moving it onto the location that it is, it is completely removed from anything that has ever been designed or given permission for the fair to manage. They are not given permission based on a plat, they are given permission from the Board of Commissioners based upon geography. There is, the only access is access via the roads, so the campground will still be on county property, but it is not on any property that the fair board has ever historically been in charge of.
But it'll be on one contiguous lot? So we're gonna say, we're gonna say that it's, although we're expanding the lot that's been traditionally called the fairgrounds, we're not gonna, that part is not gonna be part of the fairgrounds?
Correct.
Okay, well, I, I can't, I don't know whether or not that's appropriate.
Yeah, that wasn't the original intent.
I, I can't tell you guys now whether or not that-
But we didn't have the disfunction going on there at that time?
So, I mean, like I said, I, I just, it would've been nice to get, I didn't know that this was gonna be the proposal at this meeting, if I'd known that, then I would've been able to maybe have a little more, some prepared response to that question or others, I don't know.
So are you planning on just moving this line back? Is that correct?
Correct.
Moving this line back because we're a few feet shy, is that what we discussed?
Well, even, even-
So this would be, this right here is fair property?
Yes.
So the entire campground will be on Bonner County property, not anything that was designated to the fair, other than the access?
But we are, maybe, yeah, but my point is, my question is, is, so we have a legal description somewhere describing, you know, describing what we have get designated as fair property? And that, you know, is probably, you know, reflects the current meets and bounds of that piece of property, the big one. Now we're gonna change that, now we're gonna change, we're gonna essentially add a piece of, we're gonna add this portion to that larger piece, but we're not gonna designate it as fairground or managed. Is that right?
Well, this is, okay, let me get my thought here. This, it'll all be Bonner, it'll say that only this and over is a fairgrounds, I bet on that, on the description, because this is the contentious piece of property that Daryl wants to build his empire on and that has always been a fight. And all it's gonna do is, we're a few feet over onto fair property, so if we move our plat line over twenty feet, that is completely on Bonner County property and not on fair manageable property.
I thought, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I thought that, I thought we're basically erasing this line and then this whole thing.
No, we'll bring this line down.
Is that right? Am I missing?
It's all gonna be one piece, it's gonna be an awkward shaped piece, but I'll tell you, part of the reason-
So that's not, so she's not right then, so-
Well, it'll all be one fairground plat, but part of the reason why I wanna do it in this manner is also, I did speak, I had, I went over and I had a cup of coffee previously with Sheriff Wheeler, and he expressed his concerns. And I actually agree that at some point in the future, there may be a need for that. By doing it in this manner, it makes it easier in the event in twenty years when that hundred million dollars that we need, as I just previously spoke, that I am in complete support that I believe that we need a newer facility over there, but I also believe that that's gonna cost a hundred million dollars. And so, right now that land is lying fallow, and so we can use it to the benefit of our county or we can let it sit and do nothing. I'm willing to have it benefit the county.
Yeah. When, when that point in time comes, an RV park is pretty easy to disassemble.
Exactly, and that's what I told Sheriff Wheeler.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, all that stuff is not, not really a legal opinion, so I don't, you know, that's, that's between you guys. I'm just more, you know, just more, I have my, I have concerns about that idea of doing a lot, what is essentially a lot with adjustment, right? I mean, what we're calling it. It's a boundary line adjustment. To create one contiguous piece, but that we're only gonna recognize a portion of that as fairground managed and the part that, the RV park is going on will remain county managed? I'm just worried about, about a disconnect between the meets and bounds, like recorded legal description of property out there, not matching up with what has been, you know, we're basically, I don't know, it's just, it's a, it's a point. But I haven't had a chance to look at it.
The original intent, when we approved this in previous board, was it would all become part of fairground property and they would manage it, but I, I don't believe that they're set up to manage the grant. So the, the grant, the construction would fall under the county and then once it was complete, then the management would go to them and because they already have the other part of the RV park-
They had a little campground up to here.
A little campground that they manage anyway, so.
This would actually be an expansion of that campground.
Right.
Is that the way it's being?
Yeah, it'd all be, all be part of the same business.
They're gonna run, like, all the permits and all the check-iners still at that same heavy fair board office. This is just additional spots.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, the original intent was so that it would be all fairgrounds and make them a little more solvent. Wouldn't make them a hundred percent solvent, but it definitely take load off the tax payers.
Gotcha. And that, I mean, that remains to be, I'm fine with that.
That would be-
I'm concerned about, let's build the campground. And those other details, we can figure that out, but I know that looking at some of the man, I have concerns with some of the management that I've, or lack thereof, so, but that's what we're working to address. I mean, it's, it's a-
That's why we put that in the MOU specifically for this, this product.
And, and that's what-
So, yeah, so, so going back to your original point, I think you said that, like, is the correct, I think the correct course of action then, if you're committed to doing the boundary line adjustment, is to simply, you know, to, you probably want, is it part of your engagement, you wanna use the same, you wanna use Sewell, you wanna use somebody else?
Well, they already have all the work.
It's-
And they're probably doing it in the middle of three.
Let me, sorry, let me clarify that. If you were just to replat the Bonner Readiness Center, like, there's the Bonner Readiness Center, which basically is the, it's like twenty acres to the south, right? If you were just to replat that and create a separate lot for the campground on just Bonner Readiness Center lot, or Bon, like a Lot One A of the Bonner Readiness Center, I think that might be more efficiently done by the original survey group.
Okay, but, but that wouldn't, there would still be a lot, there would still be a, a boundary line at the top of that plat.
We wouldn't be a lot, we would not get permission from the city. I tried to, I went and sought to see if we could do it in that, we cannot. The city will not approve the, it has to be associated with fairgrounds. Because there's an existing campground.
Is the fairgrounds park, is that, is that a platted lot to the north? So it'd have, the whole thing would have to be platted?
So basically what you have to do is you have to replat the Bonner Readiness Center, adjust the boundary and file a fairgrounds plat, for lack of a better word.
If it's not, if it hasn't already been platted, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause it's a, it's a park platted. There's two plaats.
Needs to be done anyway.
It needs to be done.
There's, there's a bunch of stuff that just should be cleaned up in terms of, like, where fence lines are, 'cause if you look at the fairgrounds or the readiness center, like, right there by the park, they're on fairgrounds property, like, right here. You see that fence line? It runs north of the property line, so that should all be cleaned up at the same time and just do it right. At that point, it might be, it would be worth getting two bids, one from the original surveyor, one for us, 'cause it's a much more involved process at that point to do the fairgrounds plat and the Bonner Readiness plat.
Then you're looking at all those, all those, those boundaries and all that.
Yeah, there's, there's more than just the original night, or nice and tight boundary of the Bonner Readiness Center plat. There's fence lines and there's all the property associated with the fairgrounds itself.
So with that and the construction that needs to be done, this grant expires on June thirtieth.
I talked to the grant office.
Oh, you did, okay.
I did, and we cannot file for an extension until April. Okay, but when that extension is filed, there has to be a grant manager and a project manager named-
Perfect.
For contact purposes, because they will, they will contact two people, that's it. The only two people, they will do correspondence.
Good, okay, that's good.
So that, so that no camp water and everybody trying for their two cents into it with the grant process.
Yes.
Okay, so then, so then game plan is to probably to reach out and for professional services contracts, you know, we can, we can bid them, we don't have to, but we can. So why don't we, if you guys can put together a, you wanna put together-
I think we have one, but, like, in the interest of transparency and full disclosure, like, if somebody can do it more efficient than us, do it.
Do you want me to get the name of that other one so that I can put that in the motion that, and we'll just keep it to Sewell and the other, well-
You wouldn't, I don't think we would do that today, you would need to, like, we could solicit them.
Get it on the-
We could just, I think we would just say, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna ask for a bid for that, and then you guys could take it on the next, as soon as, as soon as we get both of them, you could put it on the agenda for a business meeting and then you could take the low one or whatever you wanna do. But I, you can't-
You need to have the bids in place before it goes on the agenda to me.
Do we have to do a bid for this? I mean, why would we, why?
Or estimate or-
Why do we have to do a bid? Why can't we just say we're going to request from Sewell and the other, only those two?
But then you have to say, like, which bid you-
You have to approve.
Approve.
Sure, absolutely, but I, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna create the process so that we're pushing this out, because-
But then you're gonna have to do that process twice, is say, we're gonna go solicit and then once you get them, then make another meeting to say we approve.
Well, that's why I wanted to say we're gonna request the work be done by Sewell and the other dude, they make it, we make the selection, we, I'm trying to build a campground, not push this further and further and further to the left, to the right.
We have to make sure, well, look, you don't have to solicit, you could actually, right now, you could say, you know, I move to request that Sewell, submit a bid. You do, you can get the first one going right now and then let you, let them do, let them do that and then that'll, that'll speed things up.
That's what I'm referencing, I mean, I know the name of the other company, I can go get the name right now.
I think it's Tate Engineering.
It's Tate Engineering, but they were gonna subcontract it through-
Subcontracted to John Sterns.
Through John Sterns.
So I guess that a motion would be, well, let's see, is that, I'm just trying to think, how is this, how was this meeting?
It was an agenda is action item discussion decision regarding IDPR grant award slash fairgrounds. The grant award is over the middle.
So professional services does not have, you don't have to get multiple quotes, we could just say, it started?
Well, you still need, you still need a quote, you still need a quote for the board to approve. I'm telling you, you wouldn't need to go through a formal bidding for future.
And you wouldn't have to notice it, you wouldn't have to, you know, put it in paper and do all that, right?
Any other engineer, they've already got part of the work done, the other one's got part of the work done, so it's gonna be more expensive for anybody else.
But I would say this.
From a common sense standpoint, looking at it.
You're gonna, yeah, I, I would, I would say that, say that, say how it was noticed again?
So, action, discussion decision regarding IDPR grant award slash fairgrounds.
Okay, so that, that doesn't identify surveying work that you guys would be to solicit, so I don't know if that's within the scope of the agenda of the meeting.
But it's already, we've already accept, what I'm, the campgrounds has already been, this has already been accepted, so I mean, I-
Camp, sure, so the campground and the grant itself, we'll talk about those things, but this, this is something that, I, I think it's a specific, if you guys are trying to engage somebody to do additional work, I, I don't think that that's included under the agenda, like, the, the scope of what was noticed here. I, I assume maybe if it had been, we might have more people, we might have other, you know, other agencies here or agencies, firms that might be willing to do-
Well, but we can still make the motion and if you find out that it's not right, then we can just cure it in another meeting.
Uh, yeah, you can always, you can ratify, you can do other things.
So, but, I mean, we're on a timeline. I wanna move forward, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just, like I said, I'm, I'm apprehensive that you might, that that would be outside of the scope of the agenda for the meeting. So, my recommendation is that you simply, we just put it on the, the business meeting for the, as quickly as possible. Today's what, today is Thursday, so we can actually do it for Tuesday, we're not, we're only losing by three, three business days. And then, uh, we put that on the agenda for, you know, how, how do you wanna characterize that? You know, a motion to solicit bids for surveys, professional services at the fair-
But we aren't soliciting bids, is it? I mean, to, isn't it not to engage, it's two people, I mean, are soliciting bids just for those- But we aren't soliciting bids, is it? I mean, to, isn't it not to engage, it's two people, soliciting bids just for those two?
Yeah, we could name them.
Sure.
Yeah, we could say to solicit bids from the, from the two, because it sounds like that's what we're just being ready.
Yeah, they have, they're already in that position.
Or just to approve additional work, I mean, if they're already under, if they already have an agreement to do it, um, then we could say, you could do that, but I, I don't think we can, you can just tell them, go do it. It has to be something that would be agendized and, and for a motion for the board to approve.
Probably the simplest, easiest route, since he's already under contract to do the engineering, right?
Yeah, that.
To approve the additional.
Approve, that's what I actually do.
The additional work, that's the, that's the shortest, easiest route.
It's, it's very nice to, to say, you know, maybe, um, you know, to, to encourage us to seek a different bid, but it's just, if you're already under, you know, we already have an existing agreement in place to do some work on this project, then I think, you know, and if we're in a time crunch here, then maybe the quickest way to do it is just to say, you know, we, the action item is to consider, um, you know, additional work for SUEL relating, you know, to do a, to do a boundary line adjustment. And then you guys approve that, it's essentially a change order to your existing agreement, um, and then off you go.
So, if all we're doing is to approving it, then we don't even necessarily utilize Tate?
Yeah, I.
Well, that'd be him, once we do it, I mean, he could if he wanted to, or chose to, or whatever.
Well, again, you, you could, you could, but it wouldn't, it would be, it would be faster to do it the way that we're proposing.
Well, in one regard, but is it gonna be faster for Tate to actually get it done?
Um.
And you just told me that, that's just where you're at, regards to.
So, um.
This is government nonsense, where we have to approve stuff piecemeal and everything, it's inefficient, but it is what it is.
So I'm buried, most of that work is done by not me, it's a separate department. And I, I think it's gonna be just as fast, and probably within, like, a pretty slim margin of error, the cost difference between us and Tate at this point.
Well, you guys are local, so I would, personally, I'm pretty focused on hiring Bonner County.
Just because of the scope, there's a significant scope expansion from the Readiness Center replat to, to replats and boundary line adjustments between those two plats, it's not as, like, it's, it's a much more involved project. So, like, we have most of Tate's work, like, well, we have all of Tate's work, we would have to just find a couple of property corners.
You gotta go find pens, monuments, and stuff?
But we, we would have to do that anyway on the fairgrounds.
On the south side of it?
On the north side.
Well, oh, yeah, yeah, I, I, we're talking about the different.
So we gotta find stuff on the north side anyway.
I know what you mean.
We find the boundary tie-in, and then we can pull a lot of that information from the Tate plat that's on record.
So, for Tuesday, what do we need?
Don't yourself into it.
I'm not myself into it, I would just say, we can do a, I would say, uh, we should do a memo saying, um, a discussion decision to, um, for, for SUEL to, um, do the, the replat for both the, uh, the Readiness Center plat and, and to do a new plat for the fairgrounds.
So, and then by doing the whole fairgrounds, you can clean up those fence lines on it? I just think if we're gonna be engaged, instead of piecemealing at five thousand here, five thousand there, five thousand, let's pay ten thousand all at once, or whatever, whatever the bill is, I don't know.
I think I, I think it was fifteen thousand bucks.
Well, my whole thing is, just, let's do it right for the whole forty acres, or eighty acres, whatever it is, and get it done, and be done and move forward.
Another question that Nancy and I will have to talk about, is, is the cost of these, this, this professional service reimbursable under the grant? We'll have to do another discussion, I'll have to talk about that later.
I have to see what's.
Because it is a little bit bigger than the footprint where the grant, where the project's intended to go, but it is, we're only doing it because we wanna put it there.
Because it's a state required.
So.
Permits and adjustments is covered by the grant for ten, grant engineering design and bid process, fifteen, five hundred covered under the grant, no match.
So maybe the short answer is. I, I have a, there's a bid right here, or in, sorry, not a bid, an estimate for one five in twenty twenty-one, when Darcy applied for the grant application. Maybe a bid, in twenty twenty-two, anyway, yeah, twenty twenty-two, sorry. And under it has ten thousand dollars for conditional use permit and a model line adjustment.
That's what the grant holds out to, and the grant.
But you wouldn't, you may not have realized that the lot line adjustment included the replating of the fairgrounds.
Yeah, there's gonna be some, some additional costs.
So that would be, like, then that would be, uh.
That'd be minimal.
It'd be, yeah, but it would be the, the fair, where the county's responsibility to cover that.
Right, because if it went over the grant amount.
Yeah, we would have to, yeah.
So will you then submit a motion to us, or?
Sure.
Well, or, I'll make it, but I, if.
Actually, yeah, I mean, it sounds like it, I mean, board members do it all the time, so, we can, you just need to do a memo, and Claire can, I can work with Claire to work on memo for this, and then you can present it, um, to the, to the entire board, um, for consideration and approval. That sound good? We'll just do it right away, well, I'll have to do it this afternoon, so we can get it on the agenda for tomorrow morning.
Do we need Mr. Jensen to come back for Tuesday?
Um, so, only issue is, I'm just trying to think through this, you know, on the fly here, um, you're gonna need to approve, I mean, you could do a not to exceed, would, would that work? Because what we're talking about, we, we don't have a bid from him to know exactly what this is gonna cost in addition to the work he's done. Typically, when we have something for you guys to approve, it's a discrete number, because you have to have that number, so you can knowingly approve it. You could do a, you could do a not to exceed, what?
Twenty-five thousand?
Sure.
So great!
Like, we're only gonna charge you for the time we put you through, right?
I want a game campground. This.
Now we'll have to buy a campground.
Fifteen or twenty, or fifty?
Well, well, twenty-five is fine, because if they, it's gonna take you a while to do that much work, they can always come back, yeah. Don't overdo it, because then that.
Then we're gonna, yeah, no. Twenty-five, we'll get us started, if we can, if we can get the cleanup done, but as long as we can get the game campground started, so we can be in these timelines.
And, and, as long as we have a resolution, and we know, okay, we are going to replat these properties, adjust the property line, move forward with the conditional use permit, the city was, when I met with them, understanding of the timelines associated with that. So we can move forward with engineering design and conditional use permit and all that stuff, with the understanding, like, hey, this conditional use permit and this water line are going to be conditionally approved once the replat's completed.
What's your feeling from the city on their, I mean, maybe they haven't, have, have they been generally receptive to the project?
Yeah, I went and spoke with them, I've only been in office two months, so it's within the last, not even two months yet. I've spoken with them since our meeting, and they, I spoke with Sarah and Amy, because it was the same people I was working with on the planning commission. They said, we just gotta get this replatted, and the CUP can go forward, but it has to be done.
Quick.
And, well, it has to be, it has to be, it's gonna be a piece, it's gonna look something like this now. It's a, it's a funky looking, but whatever, it's all county property at the end of the day.
Right, yeah, at the end of the day, yeah.
And then we're gonna clean up the other stuff.
Okay, good, well, I, then I, it's, what time is it? Um, almost four. I probably better get back and get that memo going, um, because we need to have it before we publish at nine tomorrow, or whatever it is, um, for the agenda. Is that a game plan, where, that we're all in agreement on? Okay.
Right.
I can do it. Is there any more questions for me? What's that? Thank you. Good, you guys ready to go?
I'm gonna be sending you a lovely email to a couple, I look forward to your responses.
For what?
We can wait till after this is done, Mr. Wilson.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll chat with you, I'd like five minutes and all.
Perfect, let's do it.
Me too.
Well, good.
Let's do it.
Well, we need to adjourn this, Mr. Chairman.
All right, it is two forty-one and a half, and we will adjourn this meeting.